Evening, everyone. Welcome, and hopefully you're getting warmer out there. The heat has been turned up, I promise. Today is Tuesday, January 16th, and this is a special session to go over our first glance at this budget with all of our department heads that are here. Tracy, could we start off with roll call, please?
Leibl.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. It's pretty laid out and pretty straightforward. No other business on there except for the budget. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Absolutely.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Awesome. Before we move on to item four, I want to first say thank you to all of you in the audience for the time that you've spent with Ryan so far. Everybody up here at the table with me, these folks are here at the end of their day. This is why the time has been bumped up from a normal city council meeting. So they're, this is their last stop in their, in their day. And we are intending, as Ryan put down in this memo here, for this to be a meeting about their objectives and what's going on in their department at a high level. We also have a meeting next week ahead of our normal council meeting that will start at six o'clock where we'll get into the tax rate and some of the smaller details. But for right now, we'll let these folks in the audience lead us through their discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. As the mayor alluded tonight, we'll be focusing on the operational budgets, the capital projects. You'll have additional information coming out at you this week with your normal council packet, a select, lucky few handful of department heads will get to come back and talk to you about some of the projects that they'd like to see happen in FY '25. So as a refresher to those who've been through this process, and for those that are new, how this will work is I will, I will present an overview within each budget category. So for example, in public safety, I'll go through each department briefly highlighting some things that I've, I talked, Tracy and I talked through with the department head. And then at the end of that category, if you have any questions for a specific department head, they're here and ready to, ready to offer additional information. So with that, we'll just jump right into it. And I would actually like to start with the general fund revenues. And if you have, if you're on a computer on the whole PDF packet, it's page 35. But it's the, it's called general fund revenues, and it has the, has new next to that. So I give you just a second to get there. So the first quarter of this page is all new this year, and it's a result of the new legislation. And it's complicated. There are a number of formulas generating these numbers within the spreadsheet. In short, though, because we saw a 6.74% growth in our, in our non-TIF taxable value, there is a multiplier of 3%, a reduction of 3% to that tax value that then computes, using last year's revenues, and like I said, this is complicated, computes this year's tax rate. And so that tax rate, as you can see, about, right about halfway down the page in FY '25 is $7.86. So essentially, our 810 levy went to $7.86. We were then able to use the insurance levy, which we've not used in previous years, or at least not for a very long time. We were able to make up the difference of that 810 levy so that the revenues that we should have collected using the normal equation or the last year's equation are coming into the general fund. So as a result, you're looking at revenues this year in the general fund of $18.7 million, roughly, which is about, I think I noted in my memo, about $950,000 more than last year. So 5%, 5-plus percent increase in revenues, that's, that's not bad. As I mentioned, however, the challenge is with the growing costs of, of equipment and commodities, in the fact that the bulk of our general fund budget is people, it makes it tough regardless to balance that budget. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those expenses moving forward. So just wanted to hit on the revenues. We're going to come back then after we're done talking at the department level to look at the general fund summary to see how we're shaking out at the end of the year. Before I move on, any questions on, on the new legislation that we could attempt to answer, or just the revenues in general?
Just, just wondering, there are other levies that we're not using right now. Right.
There are, there's one, there's one other levy we're not using, and it's very small. It's the EMA, Emergency Management Association levy. And that would be probably less than $10,000 or $15,000, somewhere in there. We've, we are at max of the trust and agency, meaning all of our employee benefits are being, all of our general fund employee benefits, IPRs, et cetera, are coming out of that fund. So we no longer have any room in there to grow. And we would have $20,000 maybe in the, in the insurance levy available. So not much. I think I noted in my memo that I was hoping on initial projections that we would have a few years before we maximized these levies, but we're alarmingly close now. Okay, so we will jump to public safety. And that is, excuse me, here, page 22, I believe, of your, there we go.
27 on the computer.
Beg your pardon. That is a seven, not a two. 27, thank you. Okay, so in police, you're seeing a few changes. You're seeing a total budget increase of 3.8% from last year. As we identified in the, in some of the materials attached, the chief is proposing to leave vacant a position that was opened, a vacancy that was opened by retirement in return or in exchange. She would like to add this system, this FLOC system that you've read about in your packet. I will, I'm sure there are additional questions on that. I'm not the one to answer those. The chief will need to answer those when, when we're ready. In addition to that, within the PD budget, we're also budgeting half of the animal control officer. So the animal control officers, you might recall from last year's budget, again, it gets a little muddy here, but we budgeted for half the position last year, and then we split half that position between animal control and PD. Now we're having to budget the whole position, again, half and half between those two line items. So that's what you're seeing in police, in the police budget as far as significant changes. Jumping down to emergency management, it, nothing notable there. Fire, there are some notable changes, mainly within staffing. And again, Chief Plots can elaborate on some of this. If there are further questions, we're proposing to take the fire marshal to full-time. Currently, that position is at three-quarter time. And then plug in part-time positions throughout a weekly schedule that would, that would cover about 100-plus hours of additional, additional coverage for folks at the department or being able to be on, there onsite. We're also, we also have our protective gear in there. This is the turnout gear that we've been budgeted for every year as a replacement tool for, for our members. And then lastly, and I failed to mention this in the police department, but we have a computer equipment line item, and this goes really, it's a, it's a revolving fund that each department puts money in. I won't mention this throughout. You'll see it in every department. They're putting money in to this fund so that when it's time to replace their computers, it's there. This is a program that was set up by our IT director and has had some success. Building inspection, again, very little movement there, nothing notable. Animal control, same as I talked about above, you're seeing that animal control officer coming online, full-time now or for a full year. And so we need to account for that in the budget. We also put in some additional funding for supplies, equipment, and software that may be needed. This is a new position, so we're, it'll be a learning curve, I think, for everyone here, but we want to be prepared as that position develops. And then traffic safety, there's actually a significant change there, and that's really just a budgeting issue. The funds were budgeted a little high last year, so we were able to bring that down to a more realistic number in FY '25. So that rounds out public safety. If there are questions, we can start with police, if you want to hear anything from the chief.
I have a general question about the animal control officer. And I apologize if we've talked about this before, but is there a specific vehicle that that officer is going to be using?
Yes. We have, we purchased, how, was it last year, Michael, or the year before, we purchased an animal control vehicle?
This year or that year?
Okay. So it's, it's kind of like the vehicle you see in the old movies where the dog catcher's out.
Right.
Yeah. Nicer than that, I'm sure. A little more modernized.
You spray paint D O G.
And I guess I'd ask the chief maybe to elaborate a little bit on the FLOC system. How, how are, how will you determine what cases are going to be, that's going to be used for? I guess this is my main question.
So anytime that we have a nexus to a vehicle, or that there's a vehicle that's in town, coming in town, or going out of town, then we would utilize that system. What's really nice with the FLOC system, it actually logs. So we have to say what the reason for is that we're actually looking into the system. It logs the case number, it logs the offense, what we're looking at. So it could be as simple as a hit and run to something that somebody is missing or somebody is wanted.
Does that system send you alerts? So if there's something nationally that's put into the system on a child abduction, does it read the plate, alert you that that particular vehicle has entered your space?
So what this system will do, and we have experience with this because in university, DPS has it. So we'll get the alerts that there's some, somebody coming in the area that, that has a national hit. So they're picking up people that have warrants, that missing and endangered, suicidal, all of those, yes, we will get that, and we'll get the location, last known at this location. It's going to come in through an email, and we're probably going to utilize dispatch. So Jack will be able to send a notice to whoever, if they're leaving town, Corvail, Iowa State Patrol, anybody else who wants to receive those notifications will also receive those notifications.
So almost instantaneous?
It's pretty instant.
What's, so the initial cost at $44,000, you're wanting to be in place of an FTE replacement, correct?
That's, that's correct. I cannot believe I'm coming before you and saying we don't want an officer. We've always been, you know, behind, behind, behind. But now this is, this is like putting 12 officers around our perimeter of our city and logging plates. So we'll have that instant communication as long as we go into the system and look it up. So I'm seeing our return on investment is going to be bigger with this instead of actually replacing a retired, retired officer.
So that replacement FTE cost with benefits is what? What's an FTE right now in the current contract? Sorry, on the spot, rough number.
Ballpark, it's, it's adding any position is about $100,000 with benefits.
So less than half?
It's certified officer.
Correct.
For, for the yearly expense? And this is a yearly expense?
This is an ongoing subscription. Yep, and it's a two-year commitment.
Okay, so then with the two-year commitment, we could re-analyze, look at data, see what's been used, what the return has been, and make a decision from there on whether we keep it or not.
Correct.
Keep it, reduce it, add to it. Yeah, we'd.
And because it's subscription-based, we don't own the equipment, so we're not out any of that hardware, hardware cost. They would have to come and remove everything if we're no longer going to continue. This has been about two years in Iowa that this company has been. There are several other companies, but they have the best ballpark for, for the numbers, the lowest bid. And just seeing what other agencies are utilizing this, it's just, just phenomenal what, what they're capable of doing.
I noticed in the case study, it was Altoona, and they had said that they had paid for theirs through asset forfeiture. Do we have any kind of plans to do that, or has it just become?
Our asset forfeiture was depleted when we bought the Inveris program, and we're not seeing that money come back in through the asset forfeiture. Usually, that's drug forfeiture. So we don't have that funds right now. Unfortunately, with the asset forfeiture program, initially, because it's not in the budget, we can do that for that first year. Once it becomes a line item, once it becomes in the budget, federal government with the Treasury will not allow us to, to dip into that fund.
Yes, so just to be clear, in the Altoona case, they did that mid-budget year, as I interpreted the, the reading. And so that's why they use that asset forfeiture fund. And they were putting together that document that you read to get it into the annual budget.
And the only other question I had, like, I assume this isn't going to be an issue, but is there any kind of, to prevent, like, misuse, you know, an officer using it for their own personal reasons? Like, is there an auditing process for that?
There is an audit, and every time they do a check, they have to log in the case number, and then, of course, that's sent to their supervisor as well. So it's a really nice feature that you know who's in the system, who's actually utilizing it, and then the pictures that are captured has to go into a case file.
So do you know, so Altoona, they were very worried about people getting, you know, hits on vehicles and then having to do, like, high-risk stops, which leads to problems. So what, do you know what they did? Because they said, oh, we're going to have a policy. Do you know what they did?
So initially, it was only their detectives that had it, and that's probably how we would start it here, that our detective would start utilizing that. Once we're getting these alerts, yes. If it's a, you know, a stolen plate, we're going to have to create our policies that we're not doing high-risk stops on a, on a stolen plate. Stolen motor vehicle, we're probably not going to be doing high-risk stops on the stolen motor vehicle, but it's just going to depend on what the severity is. Warrant for their arrest, even though the warrant comes back for somebody that operates that vehicle or owns that vehicle, that might not be the driver. So there's all kinds of things that we have to put in play that has to match up before we're going to be doing, doing that. And then within our jurisdiction, too. That's a whole nother deal, too, when they, like, get to Cedar Rapids or Corvail, we're not going to be following them outside of our jurisdiction.
So just based on, you know, their cost estimates, this looks like the best system and stuff. But, you know, the policy would really need to be really defined.
Defined, and we're going to have to see what those alerts are coming in and what that looks like, and how quick it's going to be with dispatch as a third party coming in to notify officers.
I liked, I didn't know anything about this until I saw the packet. I think it's a great idea, but you guys have great questions about that. How do you feel about it otherwise?
Mayor, I foresee constituents having heartburn with this. I think that, I think Nick's going to have some homework with the chief in a, a public education on this, because as soon as they start going up, people are going to have the fear of, it's a speed camera, it's a red light camera, or invasion of privacy. And I'm sure that all of us here will hear about that, for, for sure.
And I think you're right. I think it's just public awareness, and that will soon be education, and folks will probably be hearing that from us regularly. Any other questions for, for chief on this or other items?
No, I send my questions over in advance, so thanks for the, the additional explanation on that. I do see pros and cons as well. You know, with a pilot, I saw that a city of Altoona had a pilot program, right? Would be doing something similar. Is that, is there a phased approach? What are your thoughts on implementation if decided to move forward?
So if decided to move forward, we are looking at just going all in. We're just going to protect the arterials coming in and going out of North Liberty. Of course, they always want to do more, and maybe as we get into this, there might be an intersection, there might be something that we need to do more at. I'm just not seeing that. I'm just making sure that we're putting that perimeter around North Liberty so that we have that overall protection.
So no pilot, then?
No pilot.
Well, I think, I think you could say that the two-year contract is a pilot.
Right.
We're out in two years.
I just noticed that, yeah, Altoona did what, like, a 45, 60-day pilot or something just to?
It's probably till their fiscal year started.
Oh, is that where it was? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I know the last two years, I've asked a lot of questions of the chief about the smashing grabs that are happening at the ballparks in the, in the middle of the day. And I know it's been hard for them to make any headway on that with this, you know, organized crime that's coming through. So hopefully that would assist.
And that would be one way. If it hit another town, if they took the time to put in the vehicle description and/or if they had a plate number, usually it's going to be that vehicle description, because we're also seeing they're stealing plates, they're pulling over, and they're taking off the plates that they have because they know these cities have that. I'm also hoping that this will be a deterrent with that public awareness that we have this available in North Liberty.
How easy is it to integrate, like, somebody's, I have a picture of this car that was just here, and then you want to put it in the system?
It looks like it's fairly easy. There are a couple of case studies and examples that they provided us, and I thought, you know, it's real grainy, it's fuzzy. Now, it's not going to be the doorbell ring camera, because that's usually too far, but stuff that's out in the parking lot, they put it into the system. And whether it's rust, whether it's the kids with the family of five on the back, there's, there's features on the car that they use that as that fingerprinter identifiable. But again, this system does not, it's not a red light traffic system, there's no tickets, there's no, nobody's sitting there watching it live. It is all just reactive and recording.
One thing that, from an implementation standpoint, I'd be interested in, you know, the case study, these are all the positives. If you, if it's, if there's an opportunity, what did they learn? What lessons has the city of Altoona or others learned so that we can be ahead of that curve before doing the pilot, just from a recommendation standpoint? Hey, we learned this, and you guys want to do that. So just that communication with them, I think, would be helpful and valuable.
I think you're right. The biggest thing I'm learning, and Brian hit on it as well, is about, you know, if we open up the system that we get every single alert, we're going to be inundated with alerts. So then we get to decide what, what that's going to look like. Somebody that, you know, is driving with a suspended license, is that really what we want our officers to be alerted on? I don't. There's, there's other things that we're, we're interested in, but that's the systems capability. So we'll be able to limit that down to what we want it to be. And that'll be some trial and error.
Yeah, 100%.
Seems to me like quite a bit of crime that happens here comes from people coming from outside of town. So a system like this would be helpful.
That, and there's generally, like I said, a nexus to some type of vehicle. We're a pretty motoring public, so.
Anything else for chief?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, chief.
Thanks. Yeah, I believe there's some questions out there for Chief Plots. Come on up, Brian. We are, as, as was noted, I think, in the last packet, council packet, we have a lot of administrative folks going on, a lot of calls, including the chief. And the chief, when he first got here in, at the end of 2017, put together a staffing plan. And when I looked at that initially, I thought, wow, this is aggressive. But to his credit, we've pushed through. We're technically ahead of that staffing plan. Just to give you a little more context, in FY '18, which would be, which would have been the budget after Chief Plots started, the fire department had a total budget of $680,000. And now we're at this proposed budget of 1.6. So we've made some significant investment, having to do so to turn a 100% voluntary department into a hybrid of what we have today. And we'll have to continue to, to look to make those investments down the road. So as I noted, we're, we're proposing to bring the fire marshal to full-time and some additional part-time coverage throughout the week. And maybe, Brian, you could kick us off by talking a little bit more about that part-time coverage and what you see happening there.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. In fact, if I may, I've got a handout that might better illustrate kind of where we're at today versus kind of what we're hoping to do with that part-time coverage. Apologize, I didn't know what kind of questions might get asked tonight. Pass it. Thank you. This document actually.
Chief.
This document actually started in our strategic plan, and we've just kind of been adjusting it as we've adjusted the staffing plan. So when you look at the first page under current staffing, you can see that it's as we sit today. We have a full-time lieutenant on every day, and it kind of, it kind of carves out the hours, so 6:00 AM to 7:30 AM, one person at the fire station. From 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, we have a full-time lieutenant, and then our day staff, our admin staff, which equates to myself, training officer, and then we have two, currently two three-quarter time assistant chiefs, one being fire marshal. And then from 4:30 to 6:00 PM, we have, just have that one full-time fire lieutenant. And then overnight, we currently have one full-time lieutenant and two part-time firefighters. So when we crafted this, the staffing plan years ago, our goal was a crew of three people 24/7. Always have a crew ready at the station. And it's taken us a little bit of time, but as the city administrator indicated, we've actually, if I look back over the last five years, in two, on two occasions in particular, we've had to get really aggressive with that staffing plan because our needs changed. The environment changed. Our pay-per-call or our volunteers, that group fluctuated. And so based on that, based on the environment, we really had to change the plan. And those changes were met very favorably by both Ryan and Tracy at budget time. So I certainly do appreciate that. And again, we find ourselves, even though we've just hired those three full-time lieutenants last March, which was done through a safer grant through the federal government, what we're finding is just, there are days. We went from having 35 pay-per-call firefighters in the fall of '22 down to 22 today. And we're trying. We're looking to put on another seven, but they're just, they just aren't there anymore. So in light of that, and in light of trying to get admin work done, we're just unfortunately having to, we're, we're leaning really hard on our admin staff during the week to run calls and on the weekends. I know I was at the fire station the last two days this weekend, both Monday and Sunday. I was at the fire station last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, running calls. I'm trying to take a little bit of that burden just so that Captain Humston doesn't have to come in, or the two assistant chiefs can just make sure they're at their hours. But, you know, I think it's a, it's a very good compromise to look at using part-time firefighters to fill those gaps. Right now, I think we sit very favorably with regard to the use of part-time firefighters. When we started this, the staffing plan, we went to Des Moines, the Des Moines area, and talked to Waupee, we talked to Johnston, we talked to Hiawatha, we talked to those departments that have been in our shoes and kind of asked them for the path. And largely, they gave us a lot of really good information, but they also said, you're your own unique city, you'll have to figure it out because it'll, it'll be different. And they were right. But what, what we learned in that, in that process was the fact that those departments all used part-time firefighters. And in the Des Moines metro area, there is some competition for those part-time firefighters. We saw that during COVID, when all of the minimum, or all the part-time wages across the state went up. A lot of firefighters were moving from one department to another, and they were just playing the system to see who would hire them for more money. Where we're lucky is that we're the only department in the corridor that uses part-time firefighters. And so sitting between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, we've learned, or we've heard, and we hope it's true, that there's a number of career firefighters that would be willing to help us out on a part-time basis. So I think, you know, with the investment of, I think it was 90, $75,000, an increase of $75,000 in that line item would get us another 84 hours per week, and it's all day staff. It's 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then there's another $15,000, I think, that we increased for backfill funding for when our lieutenants, our, our full-timers are using sick leave, we're using holiday time, using vacation time. We didn't plan for that when we hired them. So when they use that time, or when they go home sick, we don't have coverage. So we had to kind of make that correction in, in this year's request. So that's kind of where we're at right now. So if you look at the current staffing, back to that document I handed out, and then you look at the proposed staffing, you can kind of just get a little bit better picture of a little bit, a lot, lot fewer gaps, a little bit better coverage. I will say, it doesn't get us to the three people 24/7. There's still parts of the plan that are on paper, but it gets us to that next step. And it does cover some of the gaps, especially when we're looking at responding to medical calls or, you know, your automatic alarms, things like that. In many of those situations, we will send two firefighters, a medical call, a public assist. We can handle those, at least with an initial two-person crew, with backup hopefully to come. So that's kind of where we're at, that's what we're asking for, and I think it's, it's just that next benchmark for us. So that's kind of where we're at. That's what we're asking for. And I think it's, it's just that next benchmark for us.
Fire away with questions. You don't need my permission to ask chief if you have any up there. Brian, how long will it take, do you think, before we, you need to make a change to this staffing model after this one is implemented? Can you tell us the future?
Yeah. I thought when we hired three full-time that, you know, we actually, we flipped the plan, right? Because at the time, we looked at the need for those full-timers. We were actually supposed to expand the part-time program first, but the need for supervision, the need for program management, the need for response capability and the presence of the fire station became pretty evident that we were there. And so we flipped the plan. And so we're actually not supposed to, when we hired the full-timers, I thought it would be at least two years before we'd have to expand. But I think what happened that was so drastic was just the reduction in our paper call personnel. We just, we've lost so many folks with experience and, you know, we're finding that, you know, the folks that are coming in, for some reason, we, we've, we've kind of touted ourselves as the farm team, you know? We'll train folks. A lot of times they come to us with this notion of wanting to be career firefighters and we've started to embrace that a little bit. It's, it's gotten people in the door, which is great, but also we run the risk of losing them after, you know, one to three years. So that very much limits our experience. So to answer your question, I'm hopeful it'll be another two years before I come back asking for another part-time expansion. But I also think we have to look at the environment and adjust from there. I, I just, I don't know what that looks like in a year.
Right, always.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So not, not unique here. Corleville's the same way. They, we have to train the firefighters to a firefighter one level to be able to respond to the act, to the calls for service. And it makes them marketable. I have three of his people on our list right now. So my employer is part of the problem. And it's, that, that's just how it is. Corleville's the same. They turn over and, and have 15 rookies every class that they do because of the, the turnover, because they, they just make them marketable and they go on to a career service. The thing this helps with is turnout time for a few of the calls in the response matrix. It does not solve having three, which you've got to have a three minimum to run a structured fire. So when a house fire comes in, they're still waiting for someone, if it's outside of office hours and there's not admin to jump on as the third, to get out the door faster than the two minutes benchmark that he has. So your response matrix, so you mentioned public assist, picking up grandma and maybe some automatic alarms. What other calls would you be able to see a reduction in that two, two-minute turnout time, a talking turnout time? The turnout time is time of call to the time that they are rolling wheels to the call.
As, as far as the two people?
So what calls are you going to right now with two?
Right now, we're, we're, any kind of medical call. Mostly if it's a cardiac arrest, if there's two people in the station, they'll go, but then folks will come from home and also beat feet to the, to the, to the station and then turn out. Picking up grandma or grandpa. A lot of public assist calls anymore. We have, I think, 12% of our calls on an annual basis are good intent calls. And a large, majority of those are public assists where we go just pick up people. There's automatic alarms. If we get, you know, smoke detector activation, no sign of smoke or fire or smoke detector chirping, we'll send two people on those calls just because we don't want to wait. We want to get to the call, take care of it and get back in service. And largely, those types of very low acuity calls are, can be handled with two people. Would a third be nice? Absolutely. But we also know that the, the community expects a quick turnout time. They, they want us there fast. They want us there to take care of the problem. So we do what we can to, to get out the door.
So medicals is where you're going to see your biggest reduction in turnout. So it'd be a much faster turnout time to a call type that you're going to over 60% of responses, true?
Absolutely. Up 64%, I think, roughly.
Okay.
Yep. And to your point, counselor, about the, you being part of the problem with Cedar Rapids, one of the things that, as I indicated before, we kind of embraced the farm team kind of notion. We also promote the idea, if they want to be career firefighters, look at Cedar Rapids or look at Iowa City because we have a chance to keep them because of their living requirements, allow them to live in North Liberty. And when I first came to North Liberty, I think there were probably four career firefighters on the department. Now we're well over a third of the department that are also career firefighters. So some are staying. And that does nothing more than lift us up. Good experience, good training, and they, they bring it back home to their community that they live in. So. So you're not completely part of the problem, Brett.
So no secret, everybody here knows that those were my comments and last time's council questions. And I, that's been the one thing that I've been critical of you on is your call volume. So other department heads, us sitting at this table, take your day and now break it up three times during your day in the most, you know, unopportune times. You've got to take an hour out of whatever you're doing to go run a call because it's going to take you at least 20 minutes on running the call plus the time to put the, the run in on the backend. I mean, you're, you have no day left. One, it's not sustainable on a call volume level. I mean, he's running as many calls as some of our, you know, Cedar Rapids top, top calls for the newer firefighters. I don't know how he's getting all this done, but it's also not sustainable for keeping a fire chief long-term, in my opinion.
You, you talked about it a little bit, chief, but do we know why we have fewer paper call firefighters at this point?
You know, that was one of the things that we were warned about when we met with some of those peer departments. They said, once you start hiring firefighters, you're going to go through this natural reduction. And there's a variety of reasons, right? I mean, they start seeing the folks that are in the station running the calls. So why come up? It's just, it's, I think, over time, we've had this natural core group of folks that are really into the department and, and we'll, we'll keep them. But largely, it's, it's just a different time. We're just not finding the folks that, number one, are living in town, number two, that are so passionate about doing this for their community versus that of getting paid to do this for their community. We still have a few of those folks and, and they're, they're there a lot, which is great. But also, you know, we run the risk of burning them out too because on those days, those weekends, I think there's an asterix on the bottom or there's a bullet on the bottom of those pieces of paper that talks about our paper call group and how we target 36 hours a month for those folks. A lot of them are doing more than 36 hours because we just have staffing gaps, whether it's a holiday or a weekend day. Well, we just know that some of the, some of the members don't have a family. Hey, what are you doing today? Is there any time you can spend at the fire station? And typically they help us out when we ask, but you do run the risk of burning them out pretty quickly.
And generally, I'm looking at your proposed staffing, the only times that you wouldn't have three people at the station are 6:00 AM to 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM?
Those are our biggest gaps right now, biggest gaps. Yeah.
But you'd have more than, you'd at least have two at the station.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have two during those gaps and, you know, quite frankly, again, each time we add staffing to the department, I always try to look on the positive side of things and go, okay, now we can give the paper call folks a little bit more of a break. But it's interesting to me how, when those situations happen, some of those folks pull back even further because now we've got more people to, that we're putting in the station, we're putting in those places to respond. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a weird dynamic. It really is. I've thought about it and thought about it. I can't figure it out, but maybe it's just human nature. Yeah, they just see themselves as not being as an important, as a important part of that cog, you know?
True.
So.
How, how many part-time are we expecting?
So right now, we have, in a week's time, we have 14 shifts, so two shifts each night, and we have 13 part-timers. So we pretty much tell them all that they're going to get one shift a week. And we've gone as low as 11 part-timers and we've been able to make it work because we do have some folks in, in there that want to work more than one shift a week. But right now, we're sitting at 13. And so one of those 13 members is going to get two shifts. So this addition will be seven shifts per week in their daytime shifts. I suspect that during the week, we'll, we'll get folks to, to want to pull some shifts, especially some of those career firefighters around us that want to join. The weekends, I'm not sure about. I'll be curious to see how enticing weekend days are going to be for part-time people. That's the, that's kind of the, the, the thing that I just can't put my hand on yet. But we've also had some of our current part-time members that said, I'll do weekend days. So we're hoping we can find the right people.
And it makes sense at this point to do part-time rather than another full-time or something like that.
Yeah, just for the coverage. I just think you're talking, the amount of hours that we're looking to possibly fill, you're talking at least two, two full-time positions, if not more. I mean, 84 hours minimally during the day. So yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a good first approach just to see what's out there, see what we can, see what we can do. And then again, depending on what the environment tells us, then we can adjust from there.
A couple of things from my seat. First of all, chief, thank you for your efforts. I forgot to mention that. So I appreciate that, your, your efforts. And thank you as well, Brian. One of the things here in all the conversation and discussion, we talk about reduced call volume, more opportunity for you, different things like that to actually do your job. One of the things I always kind of look at is opportunity cost. On this, on this instance, I want to see opportunity gained. With this, where, where do you see your efforts being redirected? Is it more in the leading and recruiting for retention and, and different things like that? Or what's part of the, the, the non-hard costs that we're going to see gained from this type of addition?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. You know, for me, it's, it's that strategic thinking. Right now, it just seems like I get so caught up in running the day-to-day that I can't look down the road. I was on five calls today. I think I, I got enough time to put this together, you know? So between running out on the interstate and running to the new hospital construction site and then coming back and doing reports, it's just, you just get caught up in the day-to-day. And with a department like this that's in this evolution, I think I really need to put a lot of time into that, time that I can't. Right now, we're nearing the end. Actually, last year, we near, we were, we, we closed the chapter on our strategic plan. We started the process of reaching out to the community in the fall as far as what they want from their fire department. Haven't touched that since the fall. You know, those are just some things that, and, and just general guidance within the department. You know, I wish I had more time to meet with the assistant chiefs and discuss their roles. Right now, I hate to even admit this, but some of them are on autopilot because I just don't have time to spend time with them. So I hope that answered your question.
It, it 100% does. And that's, that's part of what, what we don't see in this packet here.
Sure.
Right? So thank you.
I think we certainly wouldn't be even able to be here asking this if it weren't for the safer grant. The importance and the, the magnitude of what the safer grant has allowed us to do with this department is immeasurable. Giving, giving three full-time, 100% paid and giving us three years to prepare financially. Many departments don't get that. It is full out or nothing. And we were able to ease into this. I, we would, we certainly wouldn't be able to, to pick this up without that. So the work that went into that was huge. Last comment from me, chief, would be on the, the weekend piece. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing your numbers. This is your call. But premium for weekends might be an idea or premium pay might have to come in to entice them to come work.
Yeah, we've tried to incentivize holidays. And on our paper call side, we've tried to incentivize holiday, holidays. We've tried to incentivize more than three shifts a month. We get those three or four people that jump at that. But no, we haven't tried, we have not gone so far as to do the weekends and that might be the next step.
It's very helpful when they're trying to get nurses at the hospital.
Yeah.
There's a, a huge premium and some of them actually, they're not working some days so they can then get the premium pay.
Yeah, my daughter's all over that.
I think the other thing to remember, and going back to it, Brian said that when, you know, what, what you gain out of, you know, having some time is you have some time. And that's really important. I've, I've done, you know, been in a similar thing and I just like, you know, I just, we just can't do this. Your stage, your office is right in the station. You know, mine is clear on the other end of the hospital. So when I need to go away, I go a couple of blocks away. You don't have to try. So you got to remember to, you know, use some of that time.
Appreciate that.
Great questions, you guys. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
I do have one. Sorry, your response to, to Brian's question over here, this Brian's question. You talked about the strategic, strategic plan that you're trying to, to update or redo at this point. I mean, that's something that you were going to try and do yourself or with our staff. Are there consultants who could be working on those things?
Yeah, certainly there's some best practice consulting out there. Selfishly, I, I've been through three of those in Iowa City by paying for that high-dollar consulting. And so kind of stole a lot of what they did. So I just kind of thought maybe we could also produce a really good document by doing it in-house. So. But I know where you're going and I appreciate that.
I, I think we, we probably could. I, I'm sure you could. But i- if that's something that would be helpful to you, I, I would certainly be in, in, interested in seeing what that looks like.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we do have, poor Tom Palmer gets overlooked in the building safety, public safety side of things. He's here tonight for building inspections, although nothing's, that, that department is, is still pretty level in terms of expenses. So unless there's objection, we'll move on. Sorry, Tom. Onto the next category.
FTEs for Tom are same as has been the last five years. True. We haven't lost anybody. We haven't gone down an FTE, Tom.
Okay, so let's move on to public works. This is page 29. And this, this one shouldn't take as. I had public works today. Oh, is that what's on the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, let's just.
Just follow, just follow the packet.
Yeah, we'll just go public works. Sorry about that, folks. And really the only, again, solid waste is an in-and-out. This is a collection for our garbage service. Transit is the, the one big expense or the one expense that we have some control over. You may remember, those of you that have been on the council for a while, this has been at 175 for a long time. And we never, for years, wouldn't touch 100,000 in this with our Corleville bus. You can see in FY 23 with the North Liberty Transit Assistance Program, along with the Corleville bus, we've inched our way up in expenses. We're getting a lot of participation in that. We also participated in some additional funding to seats through their COVID program that allowed for some additional transportation. So we're, we, we think that at least for this year, 175,000 will do. We're also in discussion, as you all know, with the rapid bus study and some other potential transit options. So I think we don't have to keep our finger on that. But for now, I think we're, we're okay here at 175.
So have we ever got numbers of who is riding the big bus?
Not individually for just North Liberty because that route goes down into Corleville and Iowa City.
Yeah. Can we probably just do that? I think we're spending a lot of money for a very few amount of people.
The last time we asked about it, they said we could certainly put a staff person on there to count.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, that's a bit of a challenge. Yeah, that's a bit of a challenge there. Not, they pushed back a little bit on that, but we can, we could certainly look into-
I would second that. I think it's very important, and whatever needs to be done to figure out a perca, a per rider cost, I think, I think we need that.
Well, they have that data, but it's for the per rider for the whole route.
Correct.
And remind us, how many stops are in North Liberty?
Is it, is it just two? Two, does he have, two stops?
Two or three.
Maybe three.
One Sugar Creek, they still do that? Then the Rec Center, and then-
Three.
Front streets, everything.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that and see what we can do.
I would, I would be interested in that breakdown, Ryan. So the 175, what we're spending on NL Tap, and then what the-
That we have.
Yeah, and what the line item is for the blue bus. But yeah, longer term, I'm, I'm with Brian. I would like to see that per rider cost, please.
Okay, moving on. We will talk about health and social services, which is our, our grant process, our social service grant process. We'll talk about it at the next meeting, but I do, I want, I wanted to just point out, we're showing 155,000, which is the same as last year. Last year, we transferred ARPA money into the general fund to cover that. We're not proposing that this year, so we, the idea is to wean ourselves off of that ARPA money. So that'll be something for you folks to, to digest over the next week, to give some thought on what you'd like to see that line item be. Okay, we'll move into culture and recreation. First up is library. You'll note that they're showing just over a 5% increase. One thing I didn't note on here, we did have, we, we transitioned a part-time person last year to full-time as part of the FY24 budget midway through the year, and so now that position will be full-time for the full year. So you're seeing a little bump there in, in personnel services. Parks and buildings, grounds, same comment on the full-time laborer, started half-year, have a whole year in FY25. As you know, we have a fair amount of equipment within that department that needs continual replacement. This department is in charge of not only the parks, but all the landscaping, the roundabouts, the medians, basically anything, anywhere, anything grows, Guy and his team are, are taking care of it, and they're doing so at a very high level. Recreation, a couple of the larger expenses here, just our, we're at a point where we need to start replacing some of our B S, V A S P vans, and those, we, years ago, I think last time we bought them, they were around 30,000. Now they're much more expensive, just like many things. We also have a, a line item here for exercise equipment, just replacing certain pieces each year on the upper level. Community Center, the, the big change here is you're seeing an expense come out of here for replacing the windows upstairs in the community center at a cost of 32,000. We will, there are, there are a handful of other capital projects that we'll talk about next week that'll be funded with some, some different funds other than general fund.
At the Rec Center?
Yeah, community center related, yes. Cemetery remains the same. This is in partnership with the Cemetery Board and the township. And then Aquatic Center, again, you're not seeing much for change here. There is a capital project included in the hotel motel tax. We'll talk about the capital projects again next week. So all that said, we have Jenny Garner with the library, Guy Goldsmith with Parks, Shelley Simpson with Recreation and Aquatic Center, and then it's kind of a tag team on the, on the community center. So questions for that group?
Jenny, I'll start off with you. It's been a few years ago since I asked if we could be open on Sundays, and that's gone really well. I think one of the questions that I didn't ask Ryan in advance, but it may not apply to everybody, but I understand that you all needed to look at your budgets and, and give up some things to make this happen. A, a question, you'll be the first to get it, but for those of you that had some bigger things, are there staffing needs? What sort of, what's, what's, what's the, what's the thing that didn't make the list at the library that you got it down to and were to, to get us here tonight?
Honestly, I had a fairly flat ask this year. I tried to maintain that just because I knew this with the staffing challenges and things we had going on. I just, we were fortunate because our income for county was not, was, is about double what it has been, as we've seen a big increase of county users coming in. So they're giving us a little more money, so that made it a little bit more possible for me not to have some of the cuts that could have been there. I went ahead and went through it. The one thing that I cut that I was most concerned about completely out was our tuition line. We've seen three people go through the MLS graduate degree program for, while they've been at the library at least, and helped to pay for those costs. So that line is zeroed out. This year, we haven't had anybody ask. I just put in a plug to say, you know, if we need to bring that back, that is the degree for librarians, so we don't have an undergrad degree available to us. So that is the big one. And then I just made a lot of tiny cuts to try to, tiny cuts, to try to just help out the cause. So it wasn't, it wasn't too excruciating, and it's just part of the, part of being on the team.
Yeah, I appreciate that, everybody, for that. Service hours, the number of hours at the library is open appropriate?
We're open sixty-seven hours a week, which is equal to Iowa City, and I believe maybe more than Corleville, with about a quarter of the staff of Iowa City and less than half of the staff of Corleville. So I think we do pretty well. Our biggest challenges are those evenings and weekends, trying to maintain the, the numbers that we feel are safe and to get the job done and serve the public. So that's the biggest hard, hardest part for us, is trying to juggle the part-timers and make sure we have enough. I hear, you know, those, those ongoing things are, they're, they're like, less likely to stay long-term. They tend to be shorter, you know, in the la, I've seen that change over the last six to ten years. Really, I think everybody has across industries, so. We are finding that we offer, you know, up to ten hours, and then people come in and say, "Oh yeah, I can work six hours a week. I've got another job." Or sometimes they're juggling two or three jobs. So just trying to work to schedule them, and our schedule around that has been the biggest challenge, probably.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Anybody else have any questions?
I was just going to ask how, if the remodel did what you wanted it to do?
Of the service tasks?
Yes.
Yes, we love them. People tend to stand up a lot more. Our staff is standing and able to, they're much more approachable to the public. We get a lot of compliments on them as well, and if you've seen the acoustic panels, that has been huge, the noise. It was amazing just as a few went up, how it tamped down that noise in the hallway, so it's much appreciated.
Anything else for Jenny?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else in Parks and Rec to talk through here? Again, the capital projects we'll spend some time on next week.
So my comments, usually it's the same every year with Parks. We have made a lot more work for them. We are, to Eric's point, maybe even sometimes a little too focused on aesthetically pleasing and not necessarily on some other things, but I, I'm appreciative of that. The city looks beautiful. We've added a whole lot on 965, the roundabouts. My CS crew's out there working constantly on that stuff, and that's all, you know, things that look good to us on paper and look, look pretty, and, but man, are they a lot of work. And I, we just don't see that until it comes to budget time, when, when they're asking. And I know all of the department heads over the years that I've been here have done things like this, where they'll budget half for one year and then half on another year to help stretch that, or, you know, to, to fires credit, you know, they'll start with half-time or a quarter time, then go to three-quarter, and then go to full. So, you know, those, those incremental steps are helpful. Guy, on your, on your mower, again, a lot more wide area to do, are you upgrading the large-area mower where you're getting more space to cut down on time? Can we see a reduction in man-hours of mowing with, with an investment like this?
Yeah, we're upgrading from a 96-inch zero turn to a 144-inch zero turn.
Less time.
Yep. Cover more ground quicker.
And still doing okay trading in the equipment and stuff before it gets totally trashed and getting a little bit back?
Yeah, that's the goal. We try to trade out every three, three, four years, but we're putting on a lot more hours now. But, you know, we're trying, we're kind of having, hanging on to some equipment a little bit longer, just so we can stretch it out and pick up some equipment that we haven't replaced in a while. This kind of stacks up a little bit, but we're, we're managing.
Are you staying competitive on your seasonal hires? Are you finding it easy to hire or hard again?
Last year was much better than the year before. Can't complain, but however, this upcoming season could be a whole, whole different thing.
Are, are we on par with Corleville right now for hourly for seasonals?
I have in checks for about a year, I guess. We were pretty competitive then. I'd have to do another check just to see.
When was the last time we upped that seasonal rate?
I think it was last year.
Yeah, I thought it was just last, last season.
Just last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same comment with Recreation. I mean, we bump those up every year to, we have to.
Yeah, those to the county, yeah. Yeah. We'll see how this next season goes and evaluate from there, but I'd say this last season was much easier. Got a lot of good quality people in, so helped out a lot.
Thank you, Guy.
You're welcome.
As far as the community side of the question, I had, I don't see it on this page here, but did I see parking lots?
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
Capital projects.
Capital projects, okay. Just coming up later.
Next week.
Okay.
Mayor on Recreation, I guess I would just ask, so with the, with the van, or the van purchase, who, how's the maintenance getting done on those city vehicles right now? And that leads into, if there's, if there's maintenance costs that we could see savings on in a lease, where the maintenance could be rolled into a lease, is that something that we've looked at? So that's kind of my thought process there.
In the past, we have used, a long time ago, used some of the streets guys, and they came up and did oil changes and the simple stuff. Anything that, you know, as the vans have aged, yeah, we just get quotes from area, local automobile places to make our fixes at this point, so that's how we've done it so far.
And we looked into the lease option a couple of years ago, and at that point, it didn't make a lot of sense if we were able to, to, you know, pay with cash in one year. I think, and actually Tracy and I just had a conversation with our bond counsel last week about different ways on financing some of the equipment, using the debt service levy as an example, if we have to in future years. And so I think as we move forward, it's something we're going to need to certainly consider. But at the time, when we looked at it, from a dollars and cents standpoint, it was cheaper to, to do what we're doing now.
How many of the vans do we have now?
Four.
And how many, do we know annual mileage on those?
Not offhand, but I can get that information for you.
I'm just curious.
We haven't replaced a van, and it's been-
It's been quite a long time, yeah.
Number of years, but, and it's not just mileage, I mean, it's all in-town stuff, so it's, you know, they're, they've aged for sure.
And just based on the, the amount that we're looking at, the 55,000, that's one van, right?
Yeah. Yes, they have increased in price.
Anything else on culture and recreation? Thank you, Shelley. So we'll jump to page thirty-three, which is community and economic development. I realize we're skipping some pages, and we'll talk into more into those next week when we, when we look at capital projects. So economic development, you're seeing that increased to cover the requests from Greater Iowa City. It should be noted that this request also then includes any Chamber of Commerce business partnership expenses we had previously, and a lot of those might have been funded out of a, a different line item, either within a department or in the hotel motel tax. So while it appears that it's a $21,000 increase, it's not so much, and they're proposing 80,000 for Greater IC, and then 16,000 for the 2030, better together, 2030, that we have our annual contribution to Blues and Barbecue, UNESCO, and Entrepreneurial Development Center in this line item as well. Yeah, planning and zoning, again, no notable increases here, again, business as usual. This is, this line item is where we take a lot of expenses out for consulting work, non-project related, that Shy Battery does. It might be review of site plans or things of that nature come out of this line item. And then finally, community relations. A note here, similar to the previous departments, that our full-time event assistant started mid-year and will come on full-time in FY25, and then increasing the services and commodities line item for a couple outreach items, including upgrading the website, and then our electronic message boards that we have throughout city buildings. And then we continue, Nick and his department continue to be creative in other types of engagement activities that are funded through this line item. So that, in a summary, is community, economic, and economic development. I guess what questions you have for me, or for Russ, or Nick?
Yes, just popped into my head, with Kevin's retirement, are we seeing lower rates with Shy Battery, or has it basically been the same?
Honestly, we haven't evaluated where we're at. I don't know if you have, anecdotally have any answer to that.
I don't.
I think what, what we're seeing so far is, I'm seeing different personnel, more personnel than what we used to just run. And I think what we're seeing more is, is a broader range. I think there's been a hundred and fifty, which is totally expected. So I'm just kind of seeing, from my perspective, just how, how the reviews and things that are going. So it's something that I just want to continue to monitor and see. Obviously, Kevin's such a rock star, you know, he was pretty much full-time for North Liberty. I'm noticing that's a little bit difficult to show. And so that's just broad scope of, of helping, which I think is necessary for, for the time.
Sure.
But I will double-check what the hourly rate. I don't know that it changed in the transition, but I'll check that.
Mayor, I, watching the Parks Commission, I, I learned a lot from a short presentation that Nick gave about this new position. I wouldn't mind, Nick, if you would highlight this. I have slowly become more excited about this position because the position that I've been begging Ryan Hire to add for four years now, five, is an economic development person that does nothing but sell North Liberty. That would have a, a tenfold return on the money coming into our town. This is as close, I think, as I'm going to get individually, as an individual counselor with one vote. Somebody that is dedicated to bringing talent to the new Centennial Park Amphitheater and bringing money from the outside in here, I think will be huge. And I think the investment that we're going to make in this person, we're going to see that tenfold, at least in the return in the, in the city. So Nick, if you don't mind?
I don't. You're, you're referring to our new event assistant, and Angela Millard began with us right after Thanksgiving. She used to live in North Liberty, and before, she was a stay-at-home mom, she was working down at the Riverside Casino, doing event sales and, and event management down there. And her role really is to help us get ready for the Centennial Center, both making sure we've got good policies there. And her role really is to help us get ready for the Centennial Center, uh, both making sure we've got good policies there for how that's going to operate in the neighborhood as well for, uh, folks coming in from outside as well as the, the, the stuff that the city wants to put on there. She, her job is going to be to bring in, um, do sales and bring in folks that want to do weddings, that want to do events there to help rent that, that facility and manage that. Um, and she's also going to free up my staff. She's already, uh, freeing up Jillian to, to have more time outside of some event execution. Right, they're working through Beat the Bitter right now together. And, and she'll be able to take things off of, off of that, of Jillian's plate. And, and she's a huge asset to this town and to the department as well. Relationship building, um, with our business community, um, as well as, um, the, the money that she helps bring in through sponsorships, um, is really pretty critical.
What are, uh, what are some of the events that you're already looking at? Bringing in, for examples?
Yeah, so at the new, uh, we've obviously talked about weddings, we've obviously talked about, uh, business conferences, but we also want to make sure that we're doing things like, uh, comedy out on, on the, um, the stage. We're working, of course, with The Inglourge, who's been a great partner in designing the, uh, the stage. We've talked with the Orchestra Iowa, um, who wants to come in and do performances there. Um, we, we see, um, the Quad Cities Ballet is excited about doing things out on that stage, as well as other regional arts partners, our schools, et cetera.
This is a, if you build it, they will come.
Again, I mean, for, for the investment in one person, the money she's going to bring in is going to be incredible.
Is she full-time now?
She is full-time now.
So that half-year was budgeted prior?
We started her mid-year, so she didn't, we didn't have that position open until, um, end of November.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks.
Any other questions on community and economic development? Let's move to general government. Got to pay that mayor and city council, so that's your first, uh, line item there. That remains, um, very close to what it was. There was, um, I think we took out, there was a a budgeting, I think it was mileage, wasn't it? That was awful high, so we reduced that a little bit compared to what we were, what we were doing. So close there. The big change in this perspective, uh, category is that, um, well, a couple of changes in administration. First, uh, you'll notice that services and commodities, uh, is drastically lower. We're getting rid of the, the lease of this facility. Eric, it's now time maybe to knock on wood again, but, uh, we should be in there, uh, sometime in the next few months. The lease here expires in June and in fact, on your meeting next week will be our last rent payment, uh, to Mr. Reple for the, for the remainder of the year. And then, uh, what we're, we're proposing to add one full-time position here, uh, and that being a finance officer. Let me take a step back. We, all of our IT costs come out of this, uh, IT personnel come out of this, um, line item as well. And again, here similarly, we brought an IT technician on, desktop technician on. Halfway through FY twenty-four, we'll now be having to budget for that full, full-time, uh, person. And then, uh, back to what I was saying, we're proposing, uh, uh, finance officer to assist with various aspects of the city's financial dealings. This fund, uh, pardon me, this position would be funded out of this line item, however, transfers would be made within water, wastewater, road use and stormwater to help cover this cost, similar to the transfers that are already made to cover various positions, uh, in the general fund. And, um, just to elaborate on the, the, the finance officer, excuse me, is it, and the notes in my memo here, but Tracy and I have been kind of kicking this around for the last couple of years and over that time have met, um, with a couple of other cities, similar growth cities, uh, to talk about how they're organized. And we think it's time. We, we are, are continuing, we continue to grow. I think our budget in FY twenty-four was at eighty million dollars. And, uh, we need another person to help manage some of this. And so we got some ideas from, we met with Coralville, for example, Iowa, that was another one, Marion, to talk through kind of how their, their, um, structure is set up. And then, uh, also in conversations with our auditor, you guys have all heard him say before, internal, if there's a weakness, it's, um, internal controls, uh, only because we don't have, uh, a number of people, so, that it would take to, to get rid of that kind of thing. So we're hopeful that, uh, by adding this person would also get rid of that issue as well. I'm sure you'll have questions, so I can take those here in a second. Let me just get through the rest of this. No election this year, uh, at least that we're planning on. Legal and, and liability remains mostly unchanged. And then, uh, the final personnel, which includes some training, uh, training costs, just in general for, for employees, remains the same as well. City Attorney Lense is here tonight too, if you want to, um, have any questions on legal liability. And of course Tracy and I can answer questions on administration, so fire away.
I was just curious, whoever's like the finance position, who's doing those responsibilities now?
Yeah, so it's a combination, mainly Tracy. As I kind of noted to you earlier, I'm, I'm, I am, I don't get into the nuts and bolts on the, the software. They keep me out of that for good reason.
He's to do the higher level. And I dig into the nitty-gritty.
And then we have, um, we have people like Mary Byers, who's our, you know, utility billing. Deputy clerk who, um, handles a, a lot of things from a utility standpoint. We have Jackie in our office who does accounts payable. Deb manages the self-insurance fund. And so payroll, yeah, so one person then would help us tie all this together.
Would this be able to free up some of Deb's time in payroll?
I don't know if it would from a payroll perspective. I think it would free up some of Tracy's time.
Yeah.
And I think it would help just from a coordination effort.
And checks and balances, it sounds like.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm frankly surprised that you guys have got this far doing.
And grateful.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've gotten this far.
I remember like way back budgets.
We started talking about this a long time ago.
Yep. So, yes, I think this is a good idea.
Absolutely.
What, what are we seeing as a, like a salary range? Do we have anything like that yet?
Remember what, what the.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
We can find that out for you. We score, we score the, all of our positions are scored and then falls within our compensation. Do you, Deb, do you happen to remember? I'm sorry. Okay.
I don't remember.
And our, our last compensation study was when, Deb?
We updated it.
Eighteen.
Okay. And actually, it's, uh, something Deb and I have talked about. Deb is, thinks she might retire sometime soon. I, I thought this would be a great going-away gift for us if she could do another one of those studies.
Before retiring?
That's on her radar.
What kind of, uh, background are we looking, you're going to be having, looking for an accounting, accountant, accountant degree?
Yes. We consulted with our auditor in drafting the job description. We also pulled job descriptions from, um, comparable sized communities throughout the state. No two cities do things exactly the same, but we were able to marry several of those together into one good job description.
Awesome.
And this is one of those things that we're looking at starting July one rather than some, sometime later in the year.
We are, and what helps us with this position is we're able to fund it with other, with other, um, funds.
And July one's a better time than starting somebody in December, in the middle of the budget.
From a budget.
So. Well, from a workload.
Yeah.
So Mayor, the, the new folks aren't going to ask this. It's going to have to be one of the, uh, us older folks and I'm not even, I mean, you're, you're way.
What are you implying?
You're way wiser than me. Uh, when was the last time the, uh, council rate was increased? It's fifty hours a meeting right now.
I don't think it's ever been raised that Brian and I can remember.
It's not been increased in my tenure.
No. And it's a question Brian's asked. We can't do anything about it this budget year. It'll, because it can't change until, um, through an election. So in our next election cycle, two years from now, it would go into effect. So it's a conversation we'll have, but we can't do anything about it until next budget season, till next budget year.
We could, we could do something about it.
But it wouldn't take.
We could, correct, it wouldn't take effect. That's, thank you for clarifying it.
And, and again, uh, the, the reason I ask, even going from fifty to seventy a meeting, let's say, you know, that's only an increase of like twelve hundred dollars of, of total for a year of, in, in its entirety. Just from the council reports that you have implemented since you've taken the mayorship, um, you know, we, we hear that the council members are way busier than we've ever been. Um, we're out doing more than, at least in my opinion. He's, he's doing a ton. You are doing a ton. And, and we're all going to events. And so I, I just think that it, it is worth conversation and it, I understand the rule. You, you can't vote now and, and have it in effect, but, uh, I mean, for that, that minimal, I think it, I think we need to have that discussion.
Yeah, it is something that we already have, will have on the radar for next year's budget discussion. I have, uh, a data source, Ryan has a data source of, uh, data for council, uh, pay across the state and for mayor's pay as well. So we already got it in there, but we just couldn't do anything to act on it this budget season because it wouldn't go in effect yet.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
And just to be clear, that, that pay study, I asked Deb to refresh. I asked her to also include mayor and council, so, and she's excited about it.
Standing.
Yeah.
Just, just as a reminder, the mayor is at five thousand?
Ten.
Ten?
No, it's not ten.
Is that five?
I think so. Do you remember?
Well, you would know, you're the one that's getting.
Here's the code book.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, we can move on.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars.
Take my word for it.
I'm sorry, I.
Well, I think it's important, it's actually less than a lot of smaller towns in the county.
Okay, well Tracy's looking at it, we will move on. I just want to touch base on the, so that concludes the general fund and on page thirty-six is the general fund summary. And I just want to point out that what you're seeing here after revenue expenses, we're showing a thirty-five thousand dollar surplus. We left that in there. Uh, as you know, we've, people have asked for, or we've asked a bunch of departments for cuts and, and, um, you know, looking where they can reduce expenditures. We thought it would make sense to have a little bit of buffer in case we need, we come across something mid-year, uh, that needs to be funded. What that does then, uh, it, it brings our surplus at the end of FY twenty-five to five point seven million, which is just under thirty-one percent. Our policy says we should be in between twenty-five and thirty percent. So I think we're pretty close there. Given what lies ahead, uh, in terms of general fund expenses and revenues, we may need to eat into that thirty percent, uh, a little bit down the road. So, uh, just trying to be cautious as we're moving forward. So that's, that's what you're seeing on that final page, uh, a pos, uh, a, a solid ending balance in the general fund. So five grand?
Okay. That's with, so the thirty-five thousand surplus, I would note, because we haven't had the discussion yet, is without any increases to social service funding.
That is correct, yes.
And, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask this before, but, um, we see the, the FY twenty-four budget here. Do we have any projection of where we're actually going to end up?
We're hesitant to, to say. I mean, right now, everything looks to be on par, but, um.
Natural disasters happen.
Yeah, we just, we've, we've, and I don't mean to dodge a question, but we're going to dodge a question. We just, things are fine right now.
Yeah.
On inflationary costs, we don't, we haven't really seen that yet.
I think if you've, I think if you've been paying attention to a few comments, they've said there, uh, were some things that were budgeted for expenses that actually weren't. So the deficits that's shown in FY twenty-four, uh, is probably not there to kind of give you at least a starting point on that. The revenue side is probably what they're probably more cautious about at this point.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. I mean, um, I think we'll, you know, based anecdotally, again, you know, I know permits have come in nicely. We've had some big permits pulled. So I just, I, I'm so cagey on this, but I don't have a good answer for you. I'll just leave it at that.
And then, um, just to be clear, like FY twenty-six through twenty-nine, the percentage is reserved is just not anything that we're even thinking about at this point.
No, I, I mean, again, this is a high-level worst-case scenario is what I like to paint, uh, here. Because there are a number of variables that we just aren't going to know about right now. And, uh, you, you know, I've heard folks over the years, not necessarily here, argue for two or three-year budgets that you should do your budget two, two years or three years at a time. And that sounds great, but, yeah, I mean, this just shows it's, it's so hard to, to predict and project. So it's hard not to do it over one year, let alone two.
Has there ever been any historical review on budgets actual over ten-year span, so we can see what kind of parameters we, we do have? So we can say, hey, you know, we could project out this within a five percent range or within a seven and a half percent range, that kind of thing? Just out of curiosity, because we see the fiscal year twenty-three actual, right? Revenues minus expenditures is a seven fifty-one. How close was that to what we had budgeted?
See, and things like that are things that I would love to be able to do.
Part of the finance officer.
I will have time to take that data and create.
Yeah.
Those kind of.
More dashboards and different things like that.
Absolutely.
So the, back to the question I asked earlier, what's the part of the gain that we get with some of these roles? And that's.
The annual audit does have budgeted to actual.
Okay.
On a, on a multi-year basis.
Thank you.
Contained in that.
Second meeting, so.
Just a solid second meeting question, I'll give you props for that.
Good question.
Okay. So we're going to move on to skip a few pages here. Because some of those pages are related to capital projects. What's next on your agenda, Tracy?
Road use.
So let's jump to road use tax fund. Michael and his team spent a few bucks.
Excuse me, what page is that, Brian?
It's page forty-two on the online packet.
Yeah, that's right. So this is where your snow removal costs come from, uh, among many other things. Just a quick recap on revenues. These are state shared revenues, so, uh, in FY twenty-three, you can see revenues that came in were equivalent to a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents per capita. That's how we're, that's how these funds are dispersed. In FY twenty-five, the state guidance is to use a hundred and thirty-two dollars per capita. We're using a hundred and thirty-one. We're traditionally a little more conservative on that. I noted in here that we're on track in FY twenty-four to get two point eight five million in revenues, uh, for, uh, for this fiscal year. But again, those payments can fluctuate every month, depending how much gas is being purchased, how many cars are being bought, registration, et cetera. But, uh, looking from a revenue standpoint, looking good. Uh, just a quick recap on FY twenty-four, you might recall, um, we funded, um, or are funding the remodel project out of this budget. That's why you're seeing a big deficit. Looking at FY twenty-five, um, there's still a deficit there. We're comfortable with it, given the end. We're comfortable with it, given the end, the, the fund balance in this fund. You can see Michael's suggesting a few pieces of equipment to keep up and to replace certain things. He can, if you have questions on those, he can certainly talk to you about that. And then lastly, I'd just note again here, this is a halftime position, or a fifty percent position that we funded in FY twenty-four. So starting in mid-year now, we'll come on for the full year in FY twenty-five. So you're seeing the personal services bump up a little bit. Questions on the road use tax fund?
No, just thanks, Michael. It's been a rough week, I know.
Okay. Very good, we're gonna move on then, we're gonna keep rolling. Stormwater is probably the, the one fund or utility that gives me the most heartburn. And you can see we're showing some ending fund balances in the red. We've just made a change that will go into effect in February for new rates. That will help this fund tremendously, but we do have some ground to make up. We're showing, and I, I want to point out in FY twenty-four, we had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for capital projects. You're not seeing that in here now. We've put a pause on that. We just don't have the funding in there. We did that initially because we thought maybe there was a chance we'd get the new rates in place before, before we actually did. So we've paused those projects, moving a couple of them to next FY twenty-five, and those are, are noted here. Still showing, after it's all said and done in year one, a, a negative balance of twenty-two thousand. A deficit for the year of twenty-two thousand. But then we start to bounce back in the next couple of years. So again, this is, this is one where we've kind of managed to do a fair amount with little funds, but it was time that we catch up. And so that's what we're, what we're proposing. I just noted also, looking at capital and equipment purchases in future years. We know right now, those are placeholders. We're gonna have to push some of those out. In FY twenty-eight, you're seeing, we can't have that big of a deficit there. Last thing I note on stormwater, and we'll talk about it more next week, but there are a couple of projects that, capital projects that we're proposing to use ARPA funds for, rather than stormwater, so that this, that this fund can catch up. Questions on stormwater utility?
What were the projects that were pushed? Were they, were they things that we talked about? Was it Bloody Creek Resto type of stuff?
Two, one project, one piece of equipment. So the project is Liberty Center repairing the, what do we call it? Capstone or not capstone? Outcropping, so in layman's term, that is the rocks around the, around the pond. Is that fair? That's a big expense, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then Michael and I have talked extensively about a leaf vacuum. We have, we have two. We'll talk about it more next week, how about that? But that's, those are the two projects.
But we were able to finish the creek repairs where we had issues with residents.
Yes.
Last year, right? So there's nothing like that legally pending issues with repairs? Okay.
No, and I, I wouldn't have, I, I don't think that, too down in the weeds, but I don't think that was a, a legal issue. I think we did the right thing, for sure.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Okay. Up next then is the water utility. And I'll, I'll just, I'll start by saying, you know, revenues are coming in strong. We're projecting four point three, maybe a shade over for FY twenty-four. So that will help obviously our ending fund balance. Those can vary with the weather. We had a dry, a dry summer, so a lot of people were pumping a lot of water. So you'll see we continue to budget conservatively, and that gets into the question about, well, should we look at raising rates this year partially and then going to next year? And I, the concern I have with that, and we can certainly look at that when we get closer to the end of the year, is are we, are we really gonna need a rate increase? No doubt down the road we will. It's just a matter of when that's gonna need to take effect. From an operating budget, Greg's got just a couple, a skid steer attachment for some equipment. Remember, we set aside eighty thousand dollars for the membrane replacements on the, of the water plant. You can see all the way down at the bottom of the page that in FY twenty-four, we have about two hundred and forty thousand dollars set aside right now for membranes. And we'll just keep feeding that area, because when we, or that fund, because when we do replace it, we'll need that cash. And then the big change, you'll notice the debt service payment jumped up. So when we structured this debt, we knew we were gonna need a couple of years of lower payments before we could afford some of the bigger ones. And so now the bigger ones are, are coming on, and they'll, then they'll level back out to about fifteen hun, one point five million here in the, in the coming years. Question on the water utility. Greg Metternich, our water superintendent, is here this evening as well.
The year-over-year net zero increase has been appreciated. I know there's a lot of work that's gone into that. Dry summer helped, but man, when you're on a campaign trail, that's all you hear about is water costs. And we, you know, it's, even though rate increases, I agree, are, are coming, it will be nice to be able to go to the citizens and say, look, for three to four years, we had zero increase, so. Appreciate that very much.
I would just note, both of these utilities are so well-run, and, and I know people are, believe the bills are, are higher. That's, while we pay for water each month, I think our surrounding communities are paying equally. It is expensive. It's expensive to treat water. And when you look at folks out west who, in some cases, are struggling for water, it's, you know, I think we're pretty fortunate here. And a comment I'll make, and Greg probably doesn't want me to say this, but you know, and again, both these utilities are run well, but Greg received a letter from one of the inspectors of the plant just a couple of weeks ago. And this guy had forty years on the job, inspected plants all over the country, and noted that North Liberty's, in his letter, in his opening letter, noted that North Liberty's one of the cleanest and well-managed plants he's ever come across. So I tell you, we have good people. I know you know we have good people, but now, you know, we have other people who see that we have good people, so. Waste water. Again, no revenue, no rate increases proposed. We're on pace to exceed revenue here in this fund as well this year. That note is there. Also wanted to just point out, you saw we had a big deficit in FY twenty-three. Poor Drew had just some bad luck in FY twenty-three. We had a fire down there, we had a flood down there.
Not at the same time.
Yeah, not at the same time. He and his team managed that well. No one else would have even known that would have happened. Public wouldn't have, in terms of operation. Toilet's still flushed, water was still treated. But we had to rely on our insurance company to help make up for some of those losses. And so you're seeing in FY twenty-four, we had, we had some proceeds come in in FY twenty-three, and then we had the remainder that come in in FY twenty-four. We are proposing some equipment updates, mainly at our lift stations. This is, we have, is it nine or ten?
Eleven.
Eleven? Sorry, I gotta.
Keep up.
Yeah, study up on that. Eleven lift stations. That take a lot to maintain. And not only maintain, but we have to have the parts on hand if something were to happen. It's not something we can wait a week for, generally. We can, we have ways to do it, but we want to have those parts on hand. And so you're seeing in here just some pair, some spare pumps for the lift station. I'll say that Drew is a magician when it comes to reusing parts. We're gonna decommission a lift station here, hopefully within the next twelve to eighteen months. This is part of an agreement we have with Corleville. It's, it's one down Fox Valley that we'll decommission. And he'll be using some of those parts to put in his inventory, so. We are also setting aside money. The membranes for wastewater are much more expensive than they are for water. It's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. We have, as of FY twenty-four, just over a million dollars set aside for those replacements when they occur. And then the last thing I'd note here is we're looking to get a dump truck down there. That's coming, that would come out of a capital fund where we have some extra cash, so it wouldn't impact, impact the operation. But the dump truck, for those of you who just toured down there, is the one that sits in the, in the sludge, sludge room. And it gets used every day to hold the sludge, transport it and back. So it's a, it's a vital piece of equipment that we need to have. So it's something that Drew and his team would be looking at, at replacing. Questions on wastewater?
I guess I'm wondering if, how long it's taking to replace, get vehicles of that nature?
Dump truck, well, it's not really my area of expertise on buying and ordering dump trucks. The current one that we use was purchased right when our D-Watering facility went online in two thousand sixteen. And that was a used nineteen ninety-one military surplus truck that we picked up free, but we had to pay for the, the transport from Georgia, which was four thousand bucks. So right now, just to replace the tires would be more than four thousand dollars on that vehicle. And for us, that one alone is just not roadworthy. But to get back to your question on, on how long does it take? I'm working with vendors right now. The thing is, to find like a good quality used one, they're seeing them pop up and then they're gone in a week, generally. So this price does reflect somewhat of a new truck. And the truck and then the, the dump body is two separate vendors on that. So trying to work and, and make those two match up and line up.
And I just know we've had to wait for a long time.
Michael, how far are you out, you know, when you have to order a truck?
Probably eighteen months. With, with specialty equipment on it, or maybe less, just basic.
So generally, what we've done previously is after the budget is officially approved in March by this group, we can start looking and issue a PO if necessary, knowing that it wouldn't be paid until the budget year starts.
Right.
I think the, the leaf vac that we talked about, that we'll talk about more next week, is, I thought you said twenty-four months out? So it's almost as bad as fire trucks.
True.
What happens to the old truck? It's old, but it's clean.
It's not really roadworthy. We won't even drive it up to put fuel in it on the road, so we fill it up down at the plant. But Michael, I think you've had luck selling them online auctions or something, haven't you?
There's a couple surplus that we can do, and we've done that for, of course, those places where it gets you more for trade, than what you would get for trade.
I don't think they'll take it on trade, but it might be an option.
Gov deals. Can we, we'll talk about it.
The final comment I would have on the utility, both utilities. We're working with, we've approved contracts with Strand Fox Engineering to update the facility plans. We're very close on wastewater, and when that's done, you'll hear from them. They'll come to a meeting and present. Water will probably be done later this year. Part of the facility plan is the financial impact of the future improvements. And so that's the last piece of the wastewater that we're working on. When we're finalized with that, this model will be updated, not for this year, but for future years, to give you an idea of what expenses are and what we're gonna need to do to rates to cover the, the capital costs of an expansion. And we're probably looking at an expansion around two thousand thirty. Both, both facilities potentially. So that's what we have for you tonight from an operating standpoint. As I mentioned, we'll, we'll dig into the capital a little bit more next week. We'll dig into the social services next week. Are there any other lingering operating questions or comments you'd like to throw at us that we could address?
So I just had one thing I'd say, is, you know, they do this at the hospital, like, thank you for all you do. It kind of drives me crazy, but really, thank you for all you do. You know, I, I don't think people, people don't even know what you guys do in the city. So I, I spend a lot of time telling people, you know, hey, our guys do this, our guys do that. You know, our water is like cleaner than most people's, you know, our wastewater is cleaner than most people's incoming water and stuff. You know, and I tell them all the stuff that, you know, you guys all do. So, you know, we just really appreciate, just want you guys to tell them that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd echo those comments as well, and really appreciate everybody's efforts. And I mentioned it to, you know, the last time, just with the, the tour and everything, but the dedication, the compromise, the collaboration that you guys put forth is, is really encouraging to see. And it's part of being, what this community is being about. What I think Brian, the OB, is referring to is making the unaware aware. And so whatever we can do, Nick, you know, as an example, to, to make sure that those folks know, hey, we haven't had a, a rate increase with our water for the X, X amount of years, right? So that when it does come, and they start looking at their own personal budgets or their own finances in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, those types of things. However, we can continue to put forth that message, I think it'd be well-received from a community basis. But again, just to reiterate, really appreciate your efforts. Let's focus on making the unaware aware, because until I was up here, I was not aware.
And thanks for coming tonight, and we know it's an, an extra duty for you to be here, so thank you very much. It's appreciated.
I'll wrap up with one more thank you. You guys know how much I love you, so. Anything else?
And then good team leaders.
Yeah, they know that all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Love us too.
Very much. Is there anything else?
No, sir.
For us tonight? Okay. Item ten is actually not on the agenda, but if you guys would like to, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much.